Call this meeting to order as soon as I can find my... Good to have everybody here on this beautiful evening. At this time, please everybody stand for a moment of prayer, please. Our kind and gracious heavenly Father, you've granted us another beautiful day, dear Lord. Be with us this evening, Lord, as we go through the business of Pickens County, that each and every one, if we have, that we are able to get together under the freedom that we were blessed with by our forefathers. By our forefathers. Guide them with us and be with us as we proceed through the evening. I humbly pray in your heavenly sweet name. Amen. And while we're standing, please, let's do a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may we see it. All right, on the minutes to the agenda, we'd like to, on item A, add item E to the action items about authorizing the chairman to sign some tax deeds. I'm gonna let Mr. Landem do a quick explanation of that. I need to move in a second to approve, for approval of the agenda, please.
Sure, one second.
Have a move in a second, any further discussion? None being all that favorable of saying aye?
All right.
None opposed, thank you. All right, that brings us down to employee recognition. And at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Becky Denny. And I am assuming no questions, time, please go ahead.
Thank you. I am so honored to get to honor our long-term employees. And we really have some wonderful people with us. And I just appreciate them so much. Come along. We have Mr. Tracy Rapper, ten years of service with the fire department.
Oh, yes.
Okay. Gina Paget, ten years with the sheriff's office.
She can be here so long.
Okay. And then, we have a biggie. We have, okay, we have Mr. Kim Quentin for thirty years. Sergeant. And let me just say a word, you are so effective in your job. I don't know if you all know, he's with Public Works. And anytime we get a complaint, call you. You're on it like that, everybody's happy. You do a fabulous job.
Well, thank you. I have a lot of help from the commissioners and all the departments and their staff. And I appreciate everyone's help.
Okay. Do you want me to read the resolution?
Please, I'll read the resolution while we get around to reading the other.
Yeah, come on, a minute. Okay. Honoring Kim Quentin for thirty years of faithful service to the citizens of Pickens County. Whereas since the formation of Pickens County in eighteen fifty-three, our citizens have relied upon the local government to provide for the health, safety, and well-being of the community. And whereas, any endeavors of any organization succeed or fail because of the people involved. And whereas, it appears that Kim Quentin entered service to the citizens of Pickens County on May first, nineteen eighty-nine, and has continued his career working for the Pickens County Public Works Department. And whereas, it is proper and fitting to recognize an individual who has made Pickens County a better place to live and work by such diligent and faithful service. Now, be it therefore resolved that Kim Quentin be and is commended for thirty years of faithful and diligent service to the citizens of Pickens County, Georgia.
Come on down here, they want your picture. We got, we got gardens they wanna put out.
Here we go.
Sure, you make the stay up here, I got one more.
Thank you.
Thank you. This, this evening, we got, we got one other thing that's on the agenda, but quite not on it. It's under recognition, if my voice will hold out. Mark and Tina Faber have a young daughter that we would like to recognize. Her name is Jenna. So Jenna, if you would please come up this way. Ms. Jenna is a third grade spelling bee champion, not just for Pickens County, but for North Georgia. You want us to move over, is that all right?
No, you're welcome.
Lady. Peter and Mark.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
All right, now we're gonna go on down to item number seven, under consent agenda. Under the consent agenda, we signed Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Proclamation. That right here. So then that brings us down to old business. Jones Mountain Road update. Kim, you wanna give us a quick Jones Mountain Road update? I talked to the guy earlier in the week, but you got any more news than what we know?
Everything's going as scheduled as of now. You know, and they're on schedule to complete the work, you know, as planned. And that does depend on the weather, you know, the weather comes into play on it. But as of now, everything's going as scheduled.
And I think they had told us that there's, it's gone bad enough where, is the end of, end of June, Johnny? That's when they're looking at...
End of June is the definitive date if the weather holds like it is.
Yeah, okay. To have both lanes open and everything be operational?
Yes.
All right. All right. Then that brings us down to a joint resolution for the city and county on their economic development. Mr. Landem, you wanna speak to that real quick?
We discussed this in the work session. And it's unchanged from there. The city, as my understanding of the city, passed the resolution as written in their, in their meeting earlier this month. And if you do, if you see fit to pass the resolution, I'd also ask if it calls for the county to appoint three people to the joint committee. And I would ask that you go ahead and appoint those three people. I think the city appointed better three than that way to, that you get on with the business of selecting the rest.
All right. So y'all have a prayer for me with the joint resolution that we discussed. I need to move, move in a second to accept the joint resolution to go in partnership with the city. Have a move in a second. Any further discussion? None being all that favorable of saying aye?
All right.
None opposed, thank you. Also along with that, the three members that we would like to appoint to that position would be Ms. Becky Denny, Mr. Todd Payne, and Mr. Don Bogus. And I'd like to make a move to accept those three as part of that committee. Have a move, have a second. Any further discussion? Becky, are you not going with that?
Yes.
I mean, you're not gonna whip me when you meet it over, are you? All right. All that favorable of saying aye?
Yeah.
None opposed, thank you. That move has been completed. All right, that brings us down to under new business under item nine. A, Universal Concepts Christmas Lights, the reindeer. This is part of the plan for downtown Jasper. Mr. Dunn is here, if we have any questions to that point. Have y'all got a copy of this proposal? Did I miss something?
You missed the retirement committee.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, excuse me, Mr. Dunn, I'm gonna back up, I'm gonna go back. Retirement committee update. Ms. Becky, I think you and Officer Jacob, whatever. Can you give us a quick update of what y'all?
We are looking at several different options. And we feel good that we're making progress. But we would ask for an extension of time, maybe a couple more weeks.
You reckon we might, hopefully might know something about the work session?
We're hoping.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, you got anything to say to that?
No, uh, no, that'd be great.
Okay.
If the numbers are in, I'm sure we're, we can make a recommendation.
Okay. All right. All right. Mr. Barnes, you got any questions on that? All right, now, I'm gonna move on to new business. Sorry, I didn't, didn't mean to skip that. Item number nine, under new business, Universal Concepts, the Christmas lights and the reindeer for downtown. As most of everybody here knows, we had put up a Christmas tree and all this last year. Well, the final part of the plan as far as the county is, is involved with would be lighting the two trees in the front and the reindeer, correct?
Right.
And the price that you have, the price that they have given us is sixty-nine hundred seventy-five dollars. And that's for everything plus storage?
Uh, I think, if you look down at the roster, it may be three hundred dollars, but I think it's, that's included in there. I'm pretty sure it is.
All right. Are we gonna?
That's putting it up and storage.
Correct. Is that gonna, is that gonna get us in under the Chinese tariff law of two days ago?
Well, and, and I talked to Lori about that. And she's gonna honor the price. Uh, this is, you know, this, this price is good. In other words, she's not worried about, she wanted y'all to sign this so she can get this started and honor this price. So if you agree to do this, then she's gonna honor this price and not worry about the, she will purchase the product.
Ms. Harvey, have we got a, we've got enough funds and hope they won't de-pact at this time to? Well, they're just wanting fifty percent now, correct?
Yes, you don't have to pay off.
But we, we think, okay, and hope they won't de-pact. All right. Mr. Mark, Ms. Jenny, what y'all's pleasure with this? All right, have a move in a second. Any further discussion? None being all that favorable of saying aye?
No.
None opposed, thank you.
Thank y'all. Just to let y'all know, the city will have a, tell you, I talked to them, they have, the city's gonna put lights on the poles. There's twenty-seven poles in downtown. There will be fourteen poles with lights on it and a ribbon. And also, in between Angry Auction and Wingsology, there will be lots, which was supposed to have been done last year, but we had some problems with the buildings. What is, the building owners was not adaptable to put lights on the building. It causes some things, but we're still working on that. However, there will be, at Stegall Drive, there will be a loop in front of it, which is gonna have some crystal lights with some gold in it, so it's gonna look very good. That's across the street from where y'all are doing it. So there will be, the city will be two lights, or two trees in front of Angry Auction and Wingsology, and then there'll be one across the street, or two for y'all across the street. And then you'll have the Christmas tree and the reindeer, and I think it's gonna be beautiful.
Okay. All right.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Dunn, for what you've done on that. Just keep pushing the rest of them, get her all lit up.
And the other thing I'm gonna tell you, hopefully by the end of this month, we will have perimeter lighting on all the buildings in downtown Jasper.
Have you got a quick update on, on the lighting in, right down in downtown Jasper, fifty-three and south, north, south Main Street? Right there where the DOT's putting on the poles, any confusion to that?
Um, first of June is when I'm here.
Okay.
You don't have the mask on, I'm telling you.
That's correct.
Yeah. Uh, they've got the things in place right now, and more or less, the drilling has been done. So I guess it should be good pretty quickly now.
All right.
And of course, now you got also the lighting out there in front of the community bank. So that's another, that's gonna be masked on there.
Masked on also.
Yes, and it's, it's, it's gonna be beautiful. And the, and the poles are gonna be painted green, not black, like most of them are. So it's gonna be just like the rest of the town.
Okay.
Thank y'all.
No, thank you, Ms. Dunn, thank you, Jackie. All right, that brings us down to item number B, under the take forest station bid approval. We had three bids to that point. Uh, one bid was Appalachian Designs for five hundred ninety-nine thousand nine hundred dollars. Uh, the second bid was Magnum Construction LLC was five fifty-seven seven ninety. And then Jimmy Stewart Construction had a bid in at five oh six nine forty-eight twenty-five. Recommendation is to go with the, with Stewart Construction, nearly, nearly fifty thousand dollars less than the lowest one in its build. It's pretty well built, just like the Carlin Road Station, except one bay bigger, instead of three bays, it'll be four bays. And I think the little overhang is gonna be a little different on part of it. But other than that, don't see, don't see anything to that point. Anything you wanna add to that, Mr. Nicholson?
Nope. You said you were.
All right. I need a move in a second to approve that bid package for that forest station on a road called the Warrly Crossroads in Old, what we call Old Highway Five, Kent Highway, whatever they call it now. Sure move.
Sure.
Have a move in a second. Any further discussion? None being all that favorable of saying aye?
Aye.
None opposed, thank you. All right, that brings us down to, on Public Works, approval to sign the demolition and grading bid. Um, the way this, the way the timing is falling on this, we're requesting that the commissioners give the chairman the approval to sign the... To, yeah, to accept the lowest bid. Pardon?
The lowest response.
Yeah, the lowest response bid. Can't even talk today. Um, to accept, when it comes due, that'll save us some, probably two weeks, hopefully, of lead time on that. Uh, we will be opening the bids next week.
Next Thursday, two o'clock.
Next Thursday, two o'clock. If there's any change or any questions on that thing, I would like to, if they do, if the two commissioners are giving me the authority to sign, to sign that, I would like, if there's any issues or any questions, I'd like to speak to you.
If for some reason you're going, if you want to accept, they'll give us multiple responses.
Okay. All right. Y'all heard, y'all have the ability to do so, and you wanna give, give me the authority to sign once we get it worked out. Have a move in a second. Any further discussion? None being all that favorable of saying aye?
Aye.
None opposed, thank you. And the next part here, we have a lease. It's a commercial lease contract. We were looking at leasing three of the old service bays from off the old Los Angeles Highway that Mr. Lau and Mr. Copeland own up there on top of the hill. While we get this construction done for the demolition and the grading up there on top of the hill. Uh, that bid is, I mean, that bid, I'm sorry, that lease is coming in at forty-five hundred dollars uh, a month. And we're looking probably no more than one year. Might not even be that long. So that being said, I need to move in a second to approve this commercial lease contract. Sure move. Yes, ma'am.
Um, the forty-five hundred a month, is that, what is, is that just for three bays over there?
That's three bays and the use of the parking lot to store the county equipment over there while the construction's been going on. And we can use the three bays as a garage location to work on our equipment while we're down for that lead time.
Sure.
All right, have a move in a second. Any further discussion? None being all that favorable of saying aye?
No.
None opposed, thank you. All right, then that brings us down to the financial report, and I'm turning it over to Ms. Harvey.
Okay, thank you. Um, the financial report that y'all have in front of you is for the period ending April thirtieth. And that is four months or one day of our current fiscal year. On the, on the revenue side, the total revenues through that period that we collected are five million seventeen thousand seven hundred thirty-six dollars. And that's seventeen point eight four percent of the budgeted revenue. On the expenditures, for the general government functions, the expenditures are one million eighty-seven thousand six ninety-eight, and that's thirty point three nine percent. For the judicial functions, the expenditures are one million sixty-seven thousand six hundred twenty-seven dollars, and that's twenty-nine point four two percent. For the public safety, the expenditures are four million three hundred sixty-four thousand four hundred sixty-four dollars, and that's thirty point nine nine percent. Okay, and then we go to the public works departments. Those expenditures total one million fifty-six thousand one hundred eighty-three dollars, and that's twenty-one point seven five percent. For the health department, the senior center and the math program, fifty-one thousand six hundred twenty-three dollars, and that's sixteen point five percent. For culture and recreation, two hundred thirty-seven thousand six hundred fifty, and that's twenty-three point five percent. For housing and development, the expenditures are one hundred eighty-seven thousand five hundred sixty-two dollars, and that's twenty-eight point five. So for the total general fund revenues through the end of April, the expenditures are one, eight million fifty-two thousand eight hundred six dollars, and that's twenty-eight point six three percent. So we're about four point six percent under the budgeted amount for that period done. For the enterprise funds, the water department, expenditures were five hundred fifty-two thousand five hundred eighty-nine dollars, and that's twenty-two point eight eight percent. For the airport, a hundred twenty thousand eight hundred thirty-two dollars, and that's twenty-six point five nine percent. The, I sent, why not, budget reports to all the department heads and the elected officials on May fifteenth. And I have copies of all those, if you need to see the detailed reports.
All right, thank you, Ms. Harvey. Any, any further questions for Ms. Harvey? All right, that brings us down to item number eleven, under action items, the approved minutes. Uh, we have the minutes here for, for approval of April eighteen, twenty nineteen. You've all had those minutes to you earlier in the month. I need a, I couldn't find any, anything that I could see that needed to be corrected or deleted from that. Don't need any correction, if not, I'd like to move a second to approve. Sure move. Have a move in a second, any further discussion? None being all that favorable of saying aye?
Aye.
None opposed, thank you. All right, that brings us down to item number two, under, on the public road meeting. That was one, when that was discussed to, for possible doing away with the maintenance of Grandview Road. Um, a call meeting. Let's see, a call meeting of Pickens County Board of Commissioners was on April eighteen, twenty nineteen, five p.m. in the offices. The meeting was called over Friday, from Mr. Jones. The purpose of the meeting was to conduct public care and determine a section of Old Grandview Road located in front of Salvation Army could be removed from the county road maintenance. After much discussion, no action was taken at that time. A call meeting was set for May second, twenty nineteen, nine o'clock. The meeting was there at two. I need a move in a second, move in a second to approve those minutes.
Sure move.
Have a move in a second, any further discussion? None being all that favorable of saying aye?
Aye.
None opposed, thank you. All right. Have a work session minutes on May second, twenty nineteen. Uh, those minutes were sent to you through, through email. Uh, I couldn't find anything that needs to be corrected or deleted or added. Uh, if y'all have had a chance to work, any move, second for approval, please. Have a move in a second, any further discussion? None being all that favorable of saying aye?
Aye.
None opposed, thank you. All right, that brings us down to item number four. We had a call meeting on Old Grandview Road on May second, twenty nineteen. Um, the seventh floor call meeting of Pickens County Board of Commissioners was held on Thursday, May second, twenty nineteen, nine forty-five a.m. In Pickens County Ministry of Office located at Route sixty-sixty Church Street, Jackson, Georgia. The meeting was called over by nine forty-five by Chairman Jones. The meeting was in reference of the old section of Old Grandview Road. A motion was made by Commissioner Barnes to not remove the section of Old Grandview Road located in front of the Salvation Army camp from the county road maintenance. Commissioner Danny seconded, all voted a. I need a move in a second to approve these minutes, please.
Sure move.
Move in a second, any further discussion? None being all that favorable of saying aye?
Aye.
None opposed, thank you. All right. Now that brings us down to some rezon request. We have item number one on the rezon request. RZ zero-two nineteen twelve six two one, Brian Smith, Rocky Ridge Road, Hocking Rock, from agriculture to rural residential and small residential, twenty-seven, twenty acres. Um, it is, let's see. Pickens County Plan Commission voted for yes and zero no to approve the rezon request to split the property and rezon one point five acre tract to rural residential and the remaining twenty-five point seventy acre tract to small agriculture containing on the tax map parcel, number zero three four dash zero eight four dash zero zero four. Um, what is y'all's pleasure? I have a move in a second to accept. Any further discussion? None being all that favorable of saying aye?
Aye.
None opposed, thank you. All right. The next one is item number two. Okay, let's see here. Is that the same part? Yes, okay, Rocky Ridge Road. All right, S U S C dash zero-two dash one-nine dash twelve sixty-two, the venue at Shark Mountain. Darrell and Cheryl Colley, Rocky Ridge Road, Jasper, conditional use request, special events venue. Agriculture, ten acres, map parcel, zero three nine dash zero eight one dash zero zero two. After reviewing the application, receiving the staff report and listening to testimony from the applicant and no one from the surrounding neighborhood in attendance at Pickens County Plan Commission voted for yes, zero no to approve the conditional use request on the ten acre parcel contained on tax map parcel number zero three nine dash zero eight one dash zero zero two. What is your all's preference, please?
Move to accept that.
All right. Have a move in a second to accept, any further discussion? None being all that favorable of saying aye?
Yeah.
None opposed, thank you. All right. All right, here we go, item number three, the RZ dash two dash one-nine dash one-two-six-four, the Village Land Company LLC, Wayne Bruce, Villa Vista, Marble Hill, suburban residential, SR to highway business, twelve point five two acres, map parcel, zero four seven, C dash zero one six dash zero zero one, split. If approved, intent of the rezon, total future acres, the highway business for the purpose of the assisted living facility, independent living and multifamily living. The eighty-nine lot, single family, it's currently being marketed and reported in various phases due to the high market demand of the intent dependent upon rezon approval is to commence construction of the highway business component in twelve nineteen. Uh, let me get down here. After reviewing the application, reviewing the staff report to be approved, and listening to the testimony from both the applicants with no public input, the Pickens County Plan Commission voted for yes, zero no to approve the rezon request to split and rezon the twelve point five two acres tract to highway business on tax map parcel, number zero four seven, C dash zero one six dash zero zero one, split. What is y'all's approval for this one, please?
Move to accept.
All right. Have a move to accept. Second, have a move to accept in a second, any further discussion? None being all that favorable of saying aye?
Yeah.
None opposed, thank you. All right. That brings us down to item number C, a resolution to appoint Todd, Todd Morrissey, thank you, to the Pickens County Tax, Pickens County Board of Tax Assessors to complete the term of Nelson Mattern. I think Mr. Mattern had moved, did he? Mr. Dobbs?
He's in the process.
In the process, in position A. So Mr. Mor, Mr. Todd is willing to take his place, to finish his term. Y'all, y'all familiar with him? You know, okay. I need a, what's y'all's pleasure on Mr. Todd?
Move to accept.
All right, have a move in a second to accept. Any other, any other conversation on that one? None being all that favorable of saying aye?
Aye.
None opposed, thank you. All right, now we have on item D, a resolution to reappoint Valerie Peal to the Pickens County Library Board of Trustees. Uh, we have nowhere here for the, get a library, I don't believe, at this time. But I think her term ran out, and they're just gonna want to reappoint, put her back on the board. What's y'all's preference?
Sure.
Have a move in a second to accept. Any further discussion? None being all that favorable of saying aye?
Aye.
None opposed, thank you. All right. That brings us down to item E, the authorized chairman to sign tax deeds. And I'm gonna turn this over to Mr. Landem, right away.
Thank you, Chairman. We discussed this a little bit earlier, but as, as, if you recall, the tax deeds that the county has bought back, or the property that the county has, has bought back in tax sales, a portion of those are put in the land bank that we created for certain purposes. And then litigation ensued, and we stopped transferring them into the land bank from those that remained in the county's money. And what we're at, what I'm, what we're asking for here is just a motion to allow the chairman to sign the trans- to allow the chairman to sign the transfer of, of the tax sale lots that are in the county's name into the land bank, so that the land bank can then dispose of them.
And that goes along with the fact that the, the issue that we had with the land bank with a certain entity has all been settled?
Both, both of those cases have, have, are over.
Okay. All right, what's y'all's preference?
Sure.
All right, have a move, have a second to okay it, uh, to approve. Any further discussion? None being all the favor of saying aye?
Aye.
None opposed, thank you. That has been approved. All right, that brings us down to item number twelve under guest comments. Do you know anybody that'd like to make a, a comment? Mr. Bray, good to see you here, sir.
Just as a visitor, uh, don't have any comments, just enjoying the evening.
Well, good to have you here.
Thank you, sir.
It pleasantly surprised that you don't have a comment. Thank you very much. Well, ladies and gentlemen, y'all have a good weekend. Uh, thank y'all for being here. This meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.